Good afternoon. Today's April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, our six o'clock meeting with the county commissioners. Welcome. We're glad you're here today and we'll get moving along here. It's the tradition of this board that we begin with a couple of items. We'll have a pledge of allegiance. We'll also have our chaplain, Chaplain Taylor, if you'll come forward. Chaplain will lead us in what's called a solemnizing prayer, and this is a prayer for the commissioners. As we seek wisdom to do the things that's in the best interest of the folks of Salisbury. He kind of moves us along that way and in the wisdom, path of wisdom. So we appreciate you being here. Commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Where we come to today, thanks for this day, you bless us with, Lord. We come to you today with gratitude and love and opportunity standing in behalf of our county commissioners, Lord. We thank for them and the work they do for Rowan County, Lord. Thanks for the preparation, all the time that they put in and the effort they do. We thank for that. Especially this meeting today, we pray you give them the wisdom they need today. Bless them now in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chaplain Taylor, always good to see you. Thank you for being here. And for what you do for us. All right, commissioners, you've been given by the clerk, board to the clerk to the board, five additional items that we are going to add. If it's okay with you, to the consent agenda. Are there any other changes, additions or deletions? If not, do we have a motion to approve those additions?
Some.
A motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then we have the minutes of April fourth before us, motion in a second to approve those.
Oh, move.
Jim, motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and so then, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Move.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have one person for public comment, and Timothy Trogdon, come on, come on up and welcome. Glad you're here.
I have some handouts, do you?
Yeah, sure.
Do you want them?
All righty, well, welcome.
Oh, thank you. I'll be brief. I'm trying to improve our nine-one-one system. I'm sure you all and ninety percent of us in our community know the nine-one-one number. What we don't know is the non-emergency number. What to do after five o'clock PM if you have a situation that needs some police presence or police observation and you can't reach your own police department because they can't afford a secretary or somebody, an operator to answer the phone. And if you watched the news last week, one of our neighboring counties, counties to the north is having a serious problem with nine-one-one calls. And I don't know if that's causing them to have a turnover, but they're having trouble staffing the nine-one-one system. My guess is a lot of the calls are non-life-threatening emergency calls. Bizarre, I watched a show that came on last night and the first thing the nine-one-one person called or said when they called, "Do you need ambulance or fire?" And the lady said, "No, I need police." And he's puzzled, "I'm being kidnapped," and then she went off the air. But it was, the point I'm saying that is the operator had an attitude about why a person calls. And, you know, if you're a restaurant owner, you know, what I'm proposing is a simple solution to bring this to our attention is a magnet that has the non-emergency number along with nine-one-one. I woke up, had my window cracked, it was a little bit warm, and somebody fired some kind of weapon. And my dog went crazy. It woke me up at 2:00 AM. I had to leave at six in the morning and drive down to Charlotte, so it wasn't happy being woke up. But I still wanted to report this. You don't know what's happened. If the police officer nearby, he needs to be aware and, you know, at least check it out in case somebody's been hurt. But it was difficult to bring this to the attention, you know, of the nine-one-one lady. And then later, the police in my town weren't very nice to me, you know. Another problem I've had, I actually called the sheriff's department during the daytime and they transferred me using the emergency system to the East Spencer Police Department. So he asked me, he says, "Why are you calling me on the emergency line?" I says, "I didn't call you on the emergency line." I called the regular number to the sheriff's department and they evidently used the emergency system to transfer phone calls. So I don't know if you've ever experienced that kind of thing. But anyways, there's a proposal, you should probably check some others. It's around seven hundred dollars to get some magnets produced from a marketing company. You can keep that on your refrigerator if, you know, you woke up at two in the morning or it's eight o'clock at night. I had to use my smartphone to see if nine-one-one had a non-emergency phone number. But during a situation, you don't have time to be doing that kind of research. And there's a paper I handed out in my junk box. I'm sure you all have a place where you keep a lot of your papers. And I pulled that one out and it had that non-number, the non-emergency number on it. That's why I passed it out. And that's kind of an awkward piece to have sitting somewhere convenient as well. That's why I'm suggesting a magnet, something, if you're a business owner or a restaurant, you can have it near your register or near your telephone. So if you need to call the non-emergency number to let the police know of a situation, we can do that. And hopefully, we won't overstress our nine-one-one operators.
Well, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it. I don't see that we have any others. We'll move on to item number three. And Aaron, welcome. ZO three dash twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. April, is there a way to go full screen on it? All right. So we have ZO three twenty-two, a request from RR to eighty-five eighty-two at the location of fifteen oh five Peach Orchard Route. That's further references to tax parcel four oh six one zero or zero one zero and four oh six one two six.
Aaron, can you select resume share for me?
Let's see. Resume share?
Yes, please. Thank you, sir.
All right. So these two tax parcels, four oh six zero and zero and one two six, combined to make twenty acres off of Peach Orchard Road. The front portion of the property there.
It's not working. I'm sorry. Can you take it out of full screen mode?
Yeah, I guess.
Hit the escape button. There we go. I apologize. Thank you very much. You can put it back in full screen again.
Thank you, April.
All right, so the front portion here of the lot that has the road frontage, that has the road frontage with Peach Orchard Road, that's zoned RR. And then the back, approximately ten acres, it's all wooded down here, that's already zoned eighty-five eighty-two. So just some pictures around the site. So it's pretty much cleared off on the area that's already zoned, that's currently zoned RR. And then the back part of the parcel there, the zone eighty-five eighty-two is all wooded. And this property is located in area two of the Eastern Area Land Use Plan, and it's within the US twenty-nine eighty-five highway corridor overlay. And then in this area, it does discourage industrial development, except when you're within this industrial corridor. And then the plan encourages uses to consider scale and density when projects are connecting to utilities, which are available on this road. So the requested zoning district, it's one of the eighty-five ED districts, which were created because eighty-five is an important resource to the county. And developments within those districts should be made to maximize economic benefits to the county while minimizing potential impacts. And so these districts are designed to accommodate uses such as manufacturing, distribution, retail, service industries and corporate parks. And then the eighty-five eighty-one district is for large, for higher-scale manufacturing and employers. The eighty-five eighty-two district is a little bit smaller scale and not quite as marketable as the eighty-one district. So if we take a look at the compatibility of uses, the current zoning is RR, which is a residential district. The only uses that are commercial that are allowed are typically done as what's called a rural home occupation, which requires living on the property. And then the ED two district, so the big ones that you're going to be seeing in this district is construction uses are permitted by right. And then when you get down to manufacturing, a lot of manufacturing is permitted. The heavier-use manufacturing is a, requires a special use permit. Transportation, some of those are permitted, and that's actually going to be your biggest difference between that and the other ED districts, is that in ED two, you can have warehousing permitted by right. And then wholesale trade, some of that is permitted with a special use permit. Retail trade is only permitted in a pub. And then the service uses are only permitted in a pub in the eighty-two district. So looking in the vicinity, this property is right adjacent to the Dillard's Distribution Center. Just across the street from the property, you have a RS zone subdivision. And then to the east of the property is the Performance Park where Toyota Racing Developments located. So looking at the overhead of the property then, you can see Dillard's pretty clear there. You can see the Performance Park here. And then just for a better view, we'll go to the zoning, and you can see the split between the RR and the existing eighty-five eighty-two on the property. We'll get into this just a little bit later, but if you'll notice, next to this, there's a little bit of RR zoning on the track that has Dillard's on it and this tiny little sliver track that's between the two. And we brought this up at the planning board, and the planning board did also agree that with this recommendation, we also recommend rezoning these little portions to CBI, just to kind of close off that district.
Anyone there? Is there anything there?
Currently, you can see it's just kind of wooded and it's attached to the, to the track. And the other one's just a little sliver that actually doesn't have a recognized owner currently.
They want four.
So as far as potential impacts on facilities, Peach Orchard Road has a capacity of eleven thousand four hundred vehicles a day. The most recent traffic count was only thirty-five hundred vehicles, but it's a little bit of note with that is that that wasn't taken, it was taken all the way back in two thousand and fourteen. And it was on the other side of eighty-five. That was the closest traffic point. And that the property plans to use SRU water and sewer out there. And then at the planning board meeting, the, this was the statement of reason for consistency that was adopted. And then the planning board, along with recommending the rezoning, recommended adding those portions of four oh six zero two zero and four oh six one two seven to go from RR to CBI. So then, as far as staff comments, this is a straight district rezoning, so we're only looking what's allowed in the ED two district. And we can't add any kind of conditions of approval. And then staff also recommends adding that rezoning, that little portion of the other adjacent tracks. Then today, we'll have a public hearing, adopt statements of reasonableness and consistency, and then approve an Iowa table, the request. I don't believe the applicant is here today, so just be me. Are you here on Zoom?
Oh, are you?
So the applicant is here, if you have any questions for them as well.
Who, who actually owns those two little slivers of land?
So the
House on one of?
The top sliver here is actually part of the property with Dillard's.
Oh, okay.
And then the other one is this little sliver that doesn't actually have an owner. It's, I guess it's either unclaimed, but there's no record in the tax office who owns it.
Okay.
So we'll do the rezoning, then Salisbury takes over from here, right? You can answer that.
I don't know exactly what they'll do, but I, I think I have a feeling.
Okay. Any questions? All right, don't go far. Would the applicant like to say anything? Yep, please.
Evening, everyone. My name is Connie Merrill. I have an interest in this land. We're buying it for my husband's company. He is in a construction company and he wrecks concrete buildings. We, when we saw this land for sale with an agent in my office, Atlanta Realty and Development, I thought it would just be a great fit. We have a office and space in Charlotte, but we wanted to have something between Richmond and Charlotte, well, actually Richmond and Spartanburg, so it fits our business location really well and access from the interstate. That was the main attraction. When we spoke to Aaron, we kind of thought that it would be doable since much of it was already fitted for our purpose. To give you a picture of what our business looks like, a lot of crane erection, crane boom, pieces, parts for cranes, and most of the time, those are on-site. But we also right now have a five thousand square foot office that we utilize for people within the office for logistics, supply, equipment, obviously payroll and all the things regarding our business. So we would operate that as, put a nice building up, probably made out of tilt walls, because we know a person that could do that and have office space, warehouse space for the welding machines and the smaller equipment, and then have a yard space for some of the material, if we had to bring something back to the site, and that's what we're looking for, but to have a nice warehouse slash office space in the front. So that's what we're looking at. And when it came up, when we saw that little sliver, we thought, since it had never been deeded, we talked to the tax people, we thought we may be able to bring that in, and if Dillard's would release that one section too, we would just take that more, mostly just to have more decision-making and access and less potential issues for the future. For little pieces instead just as one large lot. And I could give you the address if you want to take a look at that online, geographically from street view. It's a very attractive building. You can look at it maybe from two years ago when we first bought it. We've made one point, I think one point two million dollars of improvements within that building. It's just, it's, we would be good neighbors if that's, you know, following the compliance that Salisbury or Rowan County would have, so. Yeah, but it suits our needs well.
All right, any questions for her? Yeah, what's, what's that address?
It is, I didn't bring my phone. If I remember, sixty-one thirty Harris Technology Boulevard. It's in Charlotte. I can't remember the zip code exactly. But sixty-one thirty Harris Technology Boulevard. We bought it, I believe it's been one and a half or two years ago, we leased it back to the seller for six months while they relocated their business. In the meantime, we gutted the inside. Mostly what they had was office space, and we wanted to reverse that. They had about two-thirds office space and maybe one-third warehouse. And we kind of gutted the inside and did just the perimeter of office spaces and did just the reverse, two-thirds warehouse, one-third office. And you can see, if there's a current picture, or I could probably take one or get that, send that to you if you wanted that as a request. If Google Street View didn't have a current image of those improvements. We could also get in touch with the commercial listing or the selling agent, and he can attest to that as well. We're not related, have no connection with him whatsoever. Our company name is Structural Unlimited, and it's LLC, and if you wanted to look that up, there's not a ton out there. But you can see the length of time in business and a little bit about what Structural Unlimited does. Two of our biggest clients is Tyndall and Spartanburg. It's a concrete manufacturer. They do the precast for parking decks. They also are the ones that do the tilt walls on-site. There's a home Tyndall Concrete Company in Richmond, as I mentioned, same purpose. We work all over the southeast, really from, like today, literally, my husband's driving a hydraulic crane down to Midway, Georgia. We go up into the Washington DC area. Walls are getting bigger, taller, heavier. You know, we used to be a tilt wall was eighty-five thousand pounds. You could do that with a relatively small crane, and that's just not so anymore. So for the occasion of the really heavy and tall pieces, the boom links to be connected or have just gotten incredibly large. And again, but that's not all the time, so that's one purpose we have a need for. But anyway, do you guys have questions, other questions for me?
I got a question. I'm going to miss it earlier. So is this, is this going to be a satellite office or are you moving your headquarters here?
That's a great question. Right now, we'll probably use the Charlotte office, because it does have, I believe the lot is a two-acre lot, including the footprint of the building. There's a space to have outdoor storage. It's a conditional I two, I guess it's not just the pure I two, but it's conditional. In that business park, there are conditions where you, obviously you can't have anything toxic, it can't be liquids, and it's literally just parts. Boom parts and some trailers sometimes. So we're fitting into that regarding Mecklenburg County. But to answer your question, one of the lead people in our company that is on-site a Monday through Friday lives in, I think Rockwell or somewhere off of one fifty-two, and she's like, "Please let me work in that office." So that would be the ultimate goal, is to let that be a place, and again, because we travel eighty-five so much, she probably would locate that. Ninety percent, that's just off the top of my head, maybe even higher than the ninety percent, the employees are on the road. They're tearing down cranes, they're relocating and moving fourteen tractor trailers to the next job site, and that's a good problem to have, because that means we have one job after the other. Again, the parts don't come back often, but we do still need those long boom pieces. Since she is, she's not title the controller, but that is what she does. She's very critical to the operations, and she lives close. And actually, I think it is Rowan County that she lives in. So that's kind of, it would make her happy. It would be great for us being right off of eighty-five. And we, I, we live in Cabarrus County. We have a partiality to Rowan County. We're about a mile and a half from the Rowan County border. And tax-wise, it's advantageous and nothing against Mecklenburg County, but there's some, even, you know, when we came to the planning committee, you know, you'd have a prayer and the pledge of allegiance, and we commented on the way home. It's like, that just doesn't happen in Mecklenburg County. And it's, again, not a slight, it's just different. So this seems more homey to us personally and professionally.
Thank you.
Anything, and again, Aaron has my number and email. If there's anything that comes or you want pictures submitted, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
So Aaron, do you you see this as you know, a size building is getting built, and is it all outdoor storage?
I don't know the specifics of the size building that they're looking to do. But one thing to keep in mind with this is this is a straight, since this is a straight district rezoning, we'd have to consider everything in the eighty-two district.
Okay. So Aaron, what, what, what should we be? You know, if it's not a very big building, then all of this is stored outside. Is this an okay area for that? Is it fenced? Are there things we need to be asking about from a visual standpoint?
So that's part of what going with the eighty-two district over, like adjoining CBI. Is it with the ED two, you do get things like improved screening requirements, there's improved buffer requirements?
So that's already built in?
That's built into the ED district. Which is part of why, when originally they came up looking for a rezoning, we went with the ED route since that gives, if they want to expand in the future, it would already be permitted by right, and they could do an expansion administratively. But it also wouldn't be a wide-open district like a CBI and allow for other uses that wouldn't be as advantageous.
I do have one more question for you. I understand you'll be looking for water sewer.
From what I understand, we would be utilizing that. There is a home on-site there. And we won't be, it's uninhabitable from what we've been told. So I know that they have city water, I believe, is that right? Where it's accessible. We'll be joining with that accessibility, whether that home had it or not. We didn't factor the house as any value, really investigate that, but.
Have you spoken with SRU or the city of Salisbury?
We have not. This, we felt like was our first step, and we kind of thought we'd do one thing at a time and double-check it would meet our needs and meet what the county had for a need. So after this, this will be a busy week, hopefully, whatever the decision is made.
And while you're up there, just for the record, would you repeat again, what size building?
Yes, and I'm sorry, this is a little new to me. We've talked about that being anywhere from five to six, maybe upwards of eight thousand square feet. And Aaron mentioned also that there might be a point in time, again, the land requirement isn't just to put parts every which way or, you know, all over the place or things that are out of order and health or sculpture. What we would do, though, is have the space in the mind that we would have an office for us and then possibly build another building that we could possibly lease or have something in a similar field that we would be in, or maybe just even offices. From what we understand, this is much from the commercial Realtor that we use. It just said, like, there's just not enough office warehouse-type facilities for lease. So if we had that land, we would use that as a potential down the road, pay for what we have, the land and then the building, and then potentially go forward with that. I think the building we have now is five thousand square feet, and that's where we base that from. It's utilized well for us. Every now and then, my husband will be out in the shop and he'll say, "Man, I wish this was just ten feet more or a little bit deeper." I think there are three bay doors, one really tall that they could get whatever tall truck or trailer, we don't really operate closed trailers, but so he likes the layout of it the way it is now. If I'm not mistaken, it's just over five thousand square feet.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, we're going to have a public hearing now, so we're going to open the floor. If there's anyone that would like to come forward and discuss, or if you have some comments, this would be the time to do that. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Let's see. Did you hand anything out to us? Did you hand anything out to us or is it in here? Stay, oh, I'm, I got it, I got it, I got it. Alright, alright, I'll, I'll offer up a statement of consistency and reasonableness. ZO three dash twenty-two is consistent with Area Two of the Eastern Land Use Plan, Highway twenty-nine and I eighty-five corridor and is consistent with eighty-five, eighty-two standards. And is reasonable based on the fact that aligns with the intent and spirit of the ordinance. It is surrounded by the, to the east by CBI and eighty-five, eighty-two districts. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve ZO three dash twenty-two?
No move, second.
Alright, got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Alright, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, welcome and thank you for investing in Rowan County. We appreciate you very much. Look forward to seeing you. We're good.
Good neighbor.
Alright, Shane's up next for ZTA oh-two dash twenty-two.
Get a plug every time someone says.
Form of my heart.
Sorry, Aaron, it's funny. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So I'm gonna, you know, text amendments are never exciting, but I'll try to go through this halfway.
You make them exciting, Shane.
But of course, I'll, I'll touch on a few reasons here shortly for why this could be beneficial. But nonetheless, probably over the last decade or more, I would say half of our rezonings are conditional districts. Unlike the one we just heard where you have an application of a zoning designation, you might not need all the full details yet. So that site, or a site-specific rezoning is not needed. But in a lot of cases, we'll have these requests out in the county that don't join commercial zoning. And it provides the benefit both there and also for anything in between where the board needs some additional information that general district can accommodate before you make a decision. But one of the reasons that staff has proposed changes in the ordinance, it, it really gets into the whole minor change term and section. When a plan leaves this board, then it comes to staff and the applicant says, well, you know, a few things happened since then and I need, this is what I want to do. And then we're put in a difficult position of, would the board, is this a concern? Do they need to see this again? And very rarely do we have something very specific where in this instance, it, it's handled at the staff level. So with that said, the majority of the language talks about that. The, the background here, I referenced a couple of the points and I want to hit one other section. Usually when you make a legislative decision, there's no time limit on it. It's good because the ordinance was adopted or the rezoning was passed. So there's some still reference back to the old CD language or conditional use district rezoning language we used to have for years where it would expire within two years. And that was based on the site plan element to it. So we'll talk about that too. So without further ado, and all of these changes are totally within the zoning ordinance. Real quick, we do want to just introduce the notion of the term of development agreement. Nothing more than the, the meat that's embedded within Article ten of the General Statute one sixty D. That's where all of it's going to remain in terms of if the board wants to enter into an agreement with a developer. This is merely included here to identify in the vested rights section. You have all these, when we went through one sixty D and incorporate that in ordinance, there's all these timeframes, one year, six month, two years, five years. A development agreement can be much longer if the board wants to grant one. So that is only introduced here that in the context of these options, you may have something longer. So nothing more is introduced there. In the conditional district language, we propose a few changes, but honestly, I would categorize all this as just a little bit more in-depth discussion on the purpose, background, why you would want to apply for one and more about the, the type application. Getting into Section B for an application for a CD. So this touches on a few of the little points here that address one thing that can be a challenge. We might get inundated with a bunch of documents, but it's hard to know. What are you asking for to be part of your district? And this statement here where any document needs to be very clear, both staff, planning board, commission, what is part of your district? And you've got to remember too and keep in mind that this is an applicant-driven request. It's not the, the standard straight rezoning. The county can't require a conditional district. So an applicant brings things in, sometimes it's tons of pages, but they need to be very clear and the board can see what is part of this request and what is just an example that might not be tied to the submittal. And then, of course, this is what, in addition to the general standards that will govern that future development. This is their proverbial change to the zoning ordinance that regulates their specific district. Going down in the application section, site plan is still going to be required, but we do raise the notion that a general location of that building, both the, the specific point or rectangle on the plan, the size of the building, the street locations, operational area improvements, that those can all be somewhat general. And we'll talk about the minor change section later that refers to this. The applicant does have discretion in the level of detail they want to provide the board. However, you guys have to have an appropriate level of detail that allows you to have a substantive evaluation of that request. So it's kind of the give and take. We're, we're stating this is what they have to provide and they can go and take it to the nth degree with all the detail they want to provide, if necessary, or if it comes out during the hearing process. Going down to the conditional district approval, and this will tie back in later. We will recognize and make formal the term certificate of approval. That's when this board approves a project. You have a plan, you have a set of conditions that run with the land. And then there's that certificate that's provided that they sign, that they're aware of what was approved. We'll talk more about this in a minute. Going into the effect of the conditional district. We have within, well, there's a couple of references here to the certificate, but it's also in the meat of the minor change. So again, if the previous rezoning request you just approved, if it had a site plan to it and then the merals come back and said, you know what? There's a few things that we weren't aware of and it's going to cause a change. At that point, here is what staff would review to determine what we can approve and what has to go back to the planning board. Generally, you're going to have some type of a circumstance that was not anticipated during the rezoning to a degree that probably should be expected and not just something they went off on totally different tangent on what they want to do with it. But it's got to be something that is tied back to some supporting documentation. You've got an additional permit, a survey, engineering documentation, water sewer, soil conditions, et cetera. That would provide the, the justification. And then from there, one of the things too that, that we will be looking at is the record of proceedings. If we know during that hearing, the board had a lot of dialogue between themselves and the public and the public had concerns, questions about a specific topic that we know, that was a point of discussion that we can't get in and make and accept a change without that going back to the board. Then there's one of the other bases too. The other reference I mentioned to certificate of approval. Again, we will have what's referred to as the, you know, a number of conditions that may run with that property, number one through number eight, et cetera. If the numbered condition is identified as part of that agreement, it's, it's off limits. That's something that can't be expected to be changed once it leaves this board. There are a few things that we, right now, there's three specific areas where we have a, a statement that we can look to and determine that would, that would qualify someone to allow that change or to be, for that change to be expected. And we've added a few things to that. And one, we've clarified an operational area improvement that doesn't project into the, the setback for that district. To a degree, you may look at this as, as moving some of the puzzle pieces around, but they've not went beyond the limits of what they're allowed to do from a setback standpoint, but it may shift somewhat within that site. Number two, and a couple of these were also within guidance of the Institute of Government too and some of the language that they had encouraged use of and referencing percentages or numerical values of how much change could be expected. This is reducing the setback no more than ten percent. Three would allow for an increase in the gross floor area total for a site up to ten percent. Or is a repositioning with a driver location on the same road as long as DOT accepts that? And again, going back, it wasn't a point of discussion. Like if you recall our event center from a couple of months ago, obviously that was a point of concern so that, that didn't mean that you can, we can accept any change in driver location, even if the state approved it. These two remain unchanged. The last one's to be expected, but is also included just for clarification. In this section here, staff were, we, I don't recall ever have denied someone a minor change with the timing of one-year wait, both administrative and to this board. We didn't hold the, the application and refuse to that to be considered within the one year, even though it had the language in here for that preclusion. But being that I don't know what we would ever use that for, it's removed. So any minor change that needs to be submitted after approval or to this board that we'll see in a minute, there's no one-year wait period. If the request is denied, there's a one-year wait, but not for an approved plan that has some level of change in detail. This section is largely a holdover from the previous process that was quasi-judicial in nature. It gets into different terms that under oath, something was identified that was not accurate. We're pulling that away and again, staying in the legislative lane. We'll talk about that in this section here. So when you approve a straight rezoning as we did earlier, it's zoned eighty-five, eighty-two from here, here on unless this board or future applicants request a change. So there's no expiration to a decision there. And it's conditional district, we're keeping the same two-year window because it is identified that there's a request that someone has a, maybe not a firm plan, but they, they brought a plan to this board that is much like a site plan that would quickly move into development phase. However, there may be some reason outside of the twenty-one eleven, which is the vested rights section, where maybe they need longer and we don't want to hold them to the two-year or the five-year. Unless we see that they've basically walked from the development interests in a conditional district beyond the two-year window, have no additional desire for development and just the land is left to only allow and support one site plan that was approved. Then absent that and a process to go back to a general district, then all those conditions remain in effect. So technically, there's no expiration of that. Our typical procedures, we did have the planning board consider this. They recommended approval. Nobody spoke at the courtesy hearing. It was unanimous. Made a few minor wording changes that we did incorporate here. And then here's your statement of consistency. I tried not to bore you to death, but it probably came out that way.
Let's have one question. Section D on page six. And I was listening for it, so either you snuck it by me, which isn't hard to do, or I just didn't understand what you were saying. Board of Commissioners may consider evocation of an improved district based on if it's factually determined that one or more instances below have occurred. So why, why was, why was that struck? And what's your thinking and is that okay with you guys? That, that we couldn't revoke it for substantial departure from the approved application plans or specs, refusal to, or failure to comply with requirements or false statements, so.
I think what the point there is that's materialized into changing it, just like the previous one. If we found out, you know what, that, that really doesn't work. We'd change it back to a different district. It still has the, the language here is someone gained approval through a quasi-judicial setting that was falsified. So we have to pull it away from it. And the other, it's they didn't follow the ordinance, which we have to administer at the staff level.
Alright, any questions for Shane?
One quick one. Shane, I forget which page it is, but where it was saying that you would have the discretion of approving, changing from one business to another within a certain zoning, I don't know if it was conditional use or what. But my question is, is how would you, can you give me an example of that? I mean, is it kind of like a dress shop versus a barber shop or?
Good question. That's where it goes back to the, the applicant's detail. We've had a request that this board has considered the original approval for an amendment and they were a water well drilling contractor. That's what they applied for. They could have been special trade contractor or they could have been anybody in the construction group. And it, it's sort of advantageous to them to be somewhat specific because otherwise you might get the questions, well, you know, there're going to be a bunch of cranes out there and tilt walls and other storage needs that all we're doing, we have a well-drilling truck and passenger vehicles. But at the same time, if they want to think about the next step, if something happened with their business, then maybe, it may be the better thing and you think of a shopping center that might have retail uses and service sector use, that they will identify and provide this board a list, this is what we're targeting. And as long as the change in business is in that original group, that we can accommodate that, that transition. But it couldn't be a totally different use that was not originally submitted for. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that sounds a really big leap from well drilling to, to retail.
Well, that was an example, I mean, I don't think.
Is that something that could happen?
I mean, unless they listed, you know, we're going to do both, which I don't know why they would. But at, at some point, it gets too large to where they don't need to be a conditional district because if those two are allowed, that they're pretty much opposites.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, we're gonna have a public hearing unless anyone has another question for Shane. We're gonna open the floor to a public hearing. Talk about if anyone would like to discuss the changes that they brought forward. Alright, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and got statements of consistency.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that ZTA zero-two dash two-two is reasonable, appropriate and necessary to meet the development needs of Rowan County, not previously envisioned by the East and West. east and west area land use plans. Furthermore, the adoption of Z T A O two twenty-two is deemed an amendment to the east and west area land use plan based upon the following. It adds to, uh, definition and flexibility for conditional districts based on guidance by the North Carolina School of Government. And it adds flexibility for staff level amendments to establish and improve the CDs. It's, uh, it adds better definition for, uh, expiring of approval CDs that have not been acted upon.
Right, that's a motion. Are we have a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. And then do we have a motion to approve Z T A O two dash two-two? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Shane, thank you. Appreciate it. Erin, thank you. All right, Caleb has provided for us a litter report. During the month of March twenty-twenty-two, Rowan County self-funded litter mitigation program removed eighteen thousand nine hundred ninety pounds of roadside litter and debris along with forty-seven discarded tires. Uh, Rowan County Sheriff's Office by virtue of the Environmental Crimes Special Deputy contributed to curb illegal dumping by issuing nine citations for littering or illegally dumping and by identifying twenty illegal dump sites. Along with providing public outreach and promoting the Department of Environmental Management's secure your load and proper waste disposal initiatives. We will continue to mitigate the illegal dumping of solid waste and litter through collaborative efforts across agencies, public awareness campaigns, litter cleanup events, education, outreach. So, um, nineteen thousand pounds in a month. So, some of us involved in, uh, elections now and as we're, we're going out and putting up signs, ho- hopefully those get picked up after election, but man, just the garbage on the side of the road. It's terrible.
Just a quick question. So what, what is the fine when, when the sheriff's deputies find, uh, illegal dumpsters and litterers?
I don't know. I'm telling you, I have to look it up for Rowan, but maybe fifty dollars, I don't know. Well, I don't, it might be higher. I'm not sure. We have to look it up.
Kevin told me it's forty-five dollar. Did you tell me forty-five dollars for throwing out trash out of a car?
You know what it is, Sheriff?
All right, Jim. Good evening, Commissioners. April pop the first graph, please. Alrighty. Through March twenty-twenty-two, our expenditures for the fiscal year have been a hundred and thirteen point four million dollars. Roughly four point one million higher this year than they were last year at the same time, which is roughly three point eight percent.
There's a reason for that, is, but.
A reason for the in- increase? I, I think COVID's a piece of it, and I think as we're getting out of COVID, we're doing more stuff. More activities. April, the next graph, please. Um, annual cumulative revenue through March, a hundred and thirty-three million, which is two point, uh, zero million more than it was the same time last year. Of course, our two big drivers, April, the next graph, please. Our, uh, property tax, which is at eighty-five point seven million through February. This is roughly one point five million more at the same time last year. We were at a collection percentage of ninety-five point six percent this year. We were at ninety-five point zero last year. Next slide, April. Sales tax through December, we're at seventeen point eight million, which is two point three million more than it was last year. And April, the next graph, this graph just shows you, uh, by per month, the trend. Where you can see December was three point five million, this year was, uh, roughly three million last year, five hundred thousand dollar increase. That is my report. Everybody's got any questions?
Any pitfalls we're heading toward?
Potentially inflation.
Budget coming up, and that'll be, that'll raise its ugly head.
Yes, sir. We are working on that as we speak.
We don't want to talk about it. All right, next item is budget amendments, uh, provided for us. Is there a motion to approve budget amendments? Favor, say aye. Anything else for the good of the county? Motion with jurors? All in favor, say aye. Oh, you know what? I forgot, I wanted to introduce to Rowan County Anne Tidalong Will is, uh, is here with us now, Anne, if you'll stand, and we can cheer, cheer for you. Anne is, uh, our new Director of Grant Administration and Government Relations, and she will be a really valuable part of Rowan's team. When we're doing these economic development deals, a lot of, uh, what, uh, what we do is, um, is through grant work, and we have to actually pay a grant administrator to do that because it's highly technical. But Anne is highly technical, and we were very lucky to get her, uh, she's working on her PhD in technical writing. Rhetoric and technical writing. So we, we feel like we really got a, a great person to work for us and welcome. Uh, we're excited to have you here. And then last of all, we want to welcome, uh, and, uh, wish Erin Church a happy birthday today. Today is his thirty-second birthday, so, or something like that. Happy birthday, Erin.